Okay. Okay, we're live, guys. We're going to start the Franklin Regional School Board Directors Committee of the whole meeting for April 4th, 2022. We're in executive session for personnel, contractual, and legal issues. Superintendent's report, Dr. Pirino.
No superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. Got a couple of public comments. Charles Chadwick.
My name is Charles Chadwick. I live at 3519 Ivy Drive. I wanted to talk to you guys about the walkout they had at the middle school on March 11th. There was a student walkout at the middle school. I'm going to try to go fast because there's a lot here. I'm going to skip some of it to the sake of time. But I emailed the principal there and asked her about it. She said, "Thank you for reaching out. The walkout was brought to our attention. It was not school-sponsored, nor was it organized by the staff." I followed up with, "Thank you for the response. I'm interested to know more. What was the purpose of the walkout? If it was not organized by the staff, will the students then be disciplined for walking out of class? If not, why not? I have been told by a handful of people, both adults as well as students, that this was organized by Mrs. Kelly. If it was organized by a teacher, what discipline will she face? If none, why not?" Excuse me. Why was this permitted and supported by the district during educational hours? If it wasn't permitted, what steps were taken to discourage participation? Were the students reminded about consequences that they would face per the district's handbook and policies? So if they were allowed to walk out, isn't that the school supporting it? Her response was, "It was brought to my attention that there was a national walkout scheduled on Friday at 1:00 P.M. It's not the first time we've done it, but she did say that she reviewed the procedures with the students who asked to speak with me, as we have in the past." So I said, "I must admit, I was left with even more questions and some of the same ones after reading your most recent reply." So again, what was the purpose of the walkout? If it was not organized by the staff, will the students then be disciplined for walking out of class? If not, why not? If it was organized by the staff or a staff member, what discipline will he or she face? If none, why not? Was this permitted or supported by the district during educational hours? If it was permitted, what steps were taken to discourage participation? I believe Section 218 of the Student Discipline Behavior Standards Attachment suggests misbehavior on the part of the student which disrupts the classroom procedures or interferes with the orderly operation of the school. Calls for, quote, "immediate intervention by a staff member who is supervising the student or who observed the misbehavior." Did any of that happen? Were the students reminded about consequences that they would face per the district's own handbook and policies? Were valid excuses presented within three days of the absence, or were they marked unexcused? Is it true that the students went to the high school and attempted to gain entry disrupting students in the second building? I have been told there is a video of this, though to be fair, I have not seen it." She replied that she had reached out to me on the phone and left a message, and I responded, "I am often not able to answer my phone while I'm at work. Actually, I didn't even realize there was a voicemail set up. I run a small business and just don't have the availability, as some other parents might." So with that in mind, I would prefer to continue corresponding through email, as that is the best way for me to communicate. To reiterate, I would very much appreciate some answers to those questions I included in my previous email on March 23rd. She said, "I am available early mornings. Please feel free to let me know your availability, and I'd be happy to work around your schedule to set up a time to talk." I replied, "As I stated earlier, corresponding through email is the best way for me to communicate. Is that a problem? If so, why is that a problem? When might I expect some answers to my questions on the 23rd?" That was the last message. I haven't got anything back from the principal. She wants to talk on the phone. I want to talk on the emails. That's the only chance I have to really talk, because I'm pretty busy. So I was just kind of curious if anyone could look into what happened there, if there was any disciplinary action, because there should be either the teacher or the students should be disciplined. You can't just have a walkout and that's it. Everyone's fine. So that was real odd, so, thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Fran.
I'm Fran Chilime. This is my first time coming to a school board meeting, so I have...
I need your name and I need your address, Fran.
Okay. 4223 Hills Church Road, Murraysville. Okay.
You're good.
Hi. So I actually took off for work tonight to come. I can't come to the meetings because I usually work on Monday nights. I work a lot of evenings. But I had some concerns about some things that are going on in the district. And I've lived here for over 30 years with my husband, and we raised three kids in the district, all who went to college, graduated. The third one's going to be graduating in next year. My main concerns were the content of a lot of the material that I'm understanding as being taught in the schools. And I know people have criticized me because I don't have kids in the school right now. I had put something on a prayer group on Facebook, but I do feel like I'm very concerned for the state of our children, and I do think we have a responsibility as to what kind of books are promoted in our classrooms. And I wrote a letter, which I'll read briefly, like the gentleman before me did. And it's very brief, and I wrote this on March 1st. And I addressed it to Ms. Pinos, who I believe is the curriculum. And I'm not able to attend those meetings, so I'm aware they have their own meetings, and school board members. I recently became aware that the disturbing graphic novel Persepolis by Marjane Sotera was planning to be introduced to ninth-grade students at Franklin Regional. I believe the teacher is Mrs. Goffey. As a concerned parent who had three children graduate from Franklin Regional, two who took honors ninth grade English, I was appalled this book would be taught to 14- and 50-year-old students. I also have a master's degree in mental health, so I feel like I can speak a little bit onto this subject. The language of the book is very profane, and the images portrayed are graphic and impressionable to our dear students' young minds. The book is recommended for 21-year-olds, and I have that documented here, if you want to see that, by an objective site online. And about, please see the ratings, and I quoted this in the letter that I sent to you. I'll hopefully you all received this. Paying particular attention to the profanity and violence and sex and nudity rating. I'm going to skip the next paragraph. Furthermore, I hope that the content of what is being taught and promoted to our students and beloved children will be more made available to all taxpayers such as myself. My question for the board tonight, is there a listing somewhere where a concerned citizen can see the curriculum of the books that's being taught in our classrooms? And I know that Upper St. Clair and some other well-known districts have this available. Now, maybe it is available and I'm not aware of it, so I'll let you address that, or I'll just take... But I want to thank you. I appreciate all your service. I know it's not an easy job, all you do to protect our youth, and I really want Franklin Regional to be the best it can be, because to be honest, some of the things that are going on, I would not want to send my grandchildren right now to the things that I hear going on. And as a taxpayer, of course, I have that right to send them elsewhere, but I would hope that my concerns wouldn't fall on deaf ears. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Fran. All books are open for public review for 30 days after we... Am I writing? Okay, Gretchen McGee.
Gretchen McGee. I live at 3311 Carriage Circle. Good evening. There has been a lot going on lately. The pause on the English honors ninth-grade book has been huge, but that, I believe, is only the tip of everything going on. One parent who spoke at several of the meetings in support of the book being read kept using the phrase ignorant parents. I don't believe that to be true. When our kids start school, we are not handed all the ins and outs of how the public school system works. I would say we weren't ignorant, but instead trusting. Trusting in the school, trusting in the teachers, trusting in the school board, and the fact that we were hoping that what we were seeing elsewhere would not ever happen at Franklin Regional. That in the end Franklin Regional would do what was best for our children, and if a parent were to disagree, our wishes and requests would be honored. In the past two years especially, I have been shown this not to be true. All of us have been put in positions and situations we never could have imagined, but in the end, I thought that the well-being of our kids would prevail. The superintendent said there's no agenda, no ideologies going on. I don't know if that's true, but teachers and other adults' beliefs are certainly coming through in the classroom. Some of these examples I have first had deal with the masking, enforcing an illegal and unconstitutional mandate telling children that they're breaking federal laws if they don't obey. That when they don't wear their masks, they are told that they are selfish and that they're going to kill others. My daughter exercised her right to protest and was sent to the office, yet students who were supporting the LGBT community are able to walk out of school in their protest. Other ways people's beliefs are coming through in the classroom is there was a project for equity posters being done in the middle school. My daughter was pulled from study hall several times for this event. She was shamed by others when her beliefs about the subject didn't align with theirs. Another case happened in her math class where her teacher was teaching about tipping when going out to dinner, and she proceeded to tell the students that people who overtip are the same people who complain about the gas prices, and if they just didn't overtip, they could offset the gas prices that they were paying. My family has also opted out of the health classes for our children, but on two separate occasions, my children have ended up sitting in the school office and being handed a health textbook and an assignment, so much for being able to opt out and honoring parents' wishes. I feel that other underlying things are going on in the curriculum. The StudySync books seem to be heavily weighed on one side of people's views. One StudySync book has six out of 10 stories related to oppressed minorities. I believe this sends a message to our kids without something as drastic as the kids being lined up in the hallways, white children on one side and black on the other, and the white children being forced to apologize to the black children. If students continually hear or read things with the same viewpoint, how do they internalize it? Well, I know firsthand how they internalize it. We had our minister stand up and say, "No Lives Matter till Black Lives Matter," and what my children heard was that they didn't matter because they were not the right skin color. That is what I believe is the underlying theme in these books. As far as the honor students reading graphic novels that show pictures of boys' penises, my question is, what is next? That we are going to now give our children Playboy magazines to read for the articles. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Jamie Ling.
Good evening. Jamie Ling, 3501 Burnett Drive. I realize that I may be adding my opinion a bit late to the graphic novel argument that's been going on here in the community, but I feel it is necessary after listening to many parents call the pausing of Persepolis censorship and a ban to bring to light what is actually being done, was being done, by concerned members of the school board and the administration. Pausing the adult comic book from the curriculum is called a restriction, not a censorship and not a ban, similar to R-rated movies. If the F-word is used once in a sexual connotation, and I believe the way it was used in this material was as a verb, it would immediately be given by the MPAA, the Motion Picture Association of America, an R, or restricted rating. So ask yourself, is that banning? Is that censorship? Is it only because it's a book? No, it is taking something that has language and situations that are too mature in nature to be seen by those 17 and under without parental or legal guardian supervision. So by the MPAA standard, Persepolis should be considered restricted 17 and under material. What else can be considered restricted besides movies? While video games are restricted, music can have labels put on them, even apps on your phone. Google has its own rating system of parental advisories. The parental advisory label, abbreviated PAL, is a warning label introduced by the Recording Industry Association of America in 1985. It is placed on audio recordings in recognition of profanity and inappropriate references with the intention of alerting parents of material potentially unsuitable for children. It is currently on digital music offered on online stores. I, for one, appreciate the industry's attempt at parental advisories. Many parents, like me, try to limit our children's exposure to desensitizing material. After all our hard work at home, checking our parental advisories or doing our own research to keep what our children are seeing and experiencing appropriate, we send them to school to have it all undone. I would respectfully request parental advisories for all current literature to be placed on materials used at Franklin Regional. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Helen Elliott.
Hi, my name is Helen Elliott, and I live at 3166 Chestnut Street in Murraysville. I want to thank the board for their service and for their volunteering of their time and their resources and their energies. By the way, a parent I know stated that no one should be on the school board unless they have a student in the schools. I found that very interesting. Which brings me to, parents are the first-line decision-makers for their student. I acknowledge that. But not once at the second to the last curriculum meeting was there any mention of the community's or citizens' role in the schools, or the effect of what happens in the schools on the community, and I resent that. Without the community, it would be difficult to support schools and extracurricular activities. I supported the pause on Persepolis. First, I ask if this is honors English, why is a glorified comic book being considered? Graphic novels are okay, I guess, in elementary schools, but after that, it's important to read books that challenge one's imagination, not have the images as displayed in this book. Second, the foul and vulgar language used so often in the book is offensive. Now, after hearing a student speak at a school board meeting informing me and others that this language is heard constantly in the hallways of Franklin Regional was not reassuring or comforting, it leads me to wonder what language is used in their homes, activities, churches that makes this okay? It was shocking to hear a student use the F-word in front of the school board as well as an adult. Where is respect and decency? Third, the adult content. One parent said it was no more than what they were exposed to at home or on the bus. So that makes it okay? I don't think so, and I don't believe the school curriculum should encourage it. And it's certainly not heard in my home. Then to hear a student insinuate that to kill a mockingbird is irrelevant because it is not new, quote, "not new, different, or important, and written by a white man," was a wake-up call to hear, including her claim about studying history from a white perspective. Let's play the race card. That works well these days. Or is this CRT coming out? An old, that doesn't speak well for my Bible or for yours. The mentioning of teachers' unions' involvement, the media publicity, Twitter source, the AP requirements, and after hearing that about evolution being a requirement made my blood pressure go up, was a skillful tactic to scare folk into submission. I hope the school board members and administrators have stronger backbones and are grounded in wisdom, principles, and common sense. Personally, I come from a humble background. Neither parent graduated from high school, but I would never call them uneducated. They had life experience, hard work ethics, morals and values, and something very rare in this day and age, common sense. My father served honorably in World War II. My mother and father raised six kids to be respectful to others, especially their elders, teachers, those in authority, to be honest, honorable, polite, and use manners. Some of this was learned the hard way, for sure. As a product of the greatest generation, I'm proud to say we all became solid, patriotic, productive citizens. Believe my parents would be pleased if they were to see how we turned out. I personally have values based on my faith in Jesus Christ and God's written word, and I make no apologies. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Okay, Sue Engelfritz.
Hello, good evening. My name is Susan Elgin Fritz, 3440 Mayor Drive, Murraysville. I am here to express concern about the direction FR is heading. My concerns started during COVID-19, when my four daughters were forced to go online schooling. I think we can all agree as parents, we witnessed some really great teaching online, and I think we can also say that we witnessed some really not-so-great teaching. I am concerned that my children have received surveys by teachers asking what pronouns they wish to be referred to. As, I'm concerned about the gender-neutral bathrooms at the elementary schools. Red flags flared when I registered my daughter this year for track and spring, and I had the option to choose male, female, and non-binary for sex. And now I'm concerned about our curriculum, specifically regarding the ninth-grade honors literacy class. Why is FR allowing graphic novels in an honors class in high school? Why? I don't understand it. Specifically, a graphic novel that our own superintendent referred to as a diary of wimpy kids on steroids. I'm trying to understand why FR is not holding higher standards to this community. Is it because the newest modern method of teaching? If that's the case, then please explain to me the benefits of graphic novels when there are hundreds of proven classics to dissect. How many hours of professional development or training have our teachers gone through regarding graphic novels? If you will, how many lesson plans have been reviewed? To whom are teachers accountable regarding lesson plans and any changes? And where can I find policies and regulations regarding these procedures? And how are you able to ensure classroom discussions occur around controversial content? Is it truly being taught objectively? We are allowing graphics of a man holding his penis in his hand while urinating on another man. If a student had a shirt on with this graphic, would he or she be permitted to walk in our schools? Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, that's it for public input. Okay, solicitors' comments. Thank you, Mr. Mata. Okay, we're moving on to consent agenda items. Camp, Dr. Pinos.
Yes, this is asking for approval for our facilities to run Camp Invention this summer. It's for grades K to 5. This is a yearly approval. It runs through the curriculum committee first. Dr. Brienne May is a teacher at our intermediate school that runs Camp Invention. She's the director, along with some other Franklin Regional teachers. So they act as a host site for students that want to register. It's a science-based STEM activity camp, and they ask for a waiver of the facility use fees.
Any questions on the camp? They do this every year, by the way.
Yes.
This is nothing new. Okay, Mr. Perry, district supply budget.
Good evening. The first item I have for you tonight is the annual awarding of supply bids for the 2022-23 school year. Again, we went through a sealed bid process for a variety of different bid categories. When the agenda was first published last Thursday, we weren't entirely finished tabulating all the awards, but it has since been updated. So we're looking to award $173,658.74 of supply bids for the 22-23 school year.
Any questions on district budget and supplies? Gifts and grants, Mr. Perry.
This month, we have $117 to the Fund-A-Male program from FR staff.
That's it? Okay. Budget transfers.
And this month, we have $4,853.46 in transfers related to the general fund.
Any questions on budget transfers?
Thank you.
Now we're going to go into PSBA liaison voting delegates. We usually have two voting delegates that go to the PSBA. You can have as few as one or as many as two. Are there any nominations for PSBA liaison?
I'll nominate Tracy.
Tracy? Okay, any other nominations? If there are none, if it's going to be virtual, I'll do the PSBA. I've done them probably for nine years, so... Okay, that'll be on the agenda for next board meeting, then. Any other comments on that? Ms. Willis. Personnel. Congratulations.
Good evening. Under the personnel agenda for your approval next week, under certified personnel, we have one appointment of a short-term substitute at the middle school. We also have approval for substitute teachers and building substitutes. Under support personnel, we are asking to approve the appointment of one instructional aide at the primary building and one 7.0 special education aide at the middle school. These are filling open positions. They're not new positions, they're vacancies. There are three requests for FMLA approvals. We have two requests for retirement and/or resignation. One is a second shift custodian at the high school, and one is a special education aide at the intermediate school. And then approval of substitutes under that category. And then, under supplemental personnel, we are asking for the approval of sponsors, one sponsor and one spring coach for the 21-22 school year, and as well as approval of the fall coordinators for the 22-23 season.
Any questions on personnel? Okay, affiliation agreement.
Policy review? Number seven, policy review. We are going to...
I'm sorry, policy review.
I'm sorry, that's okay. The administration recommends the board to approve the first reading of the following policies as written and move them to the second reading, and this was done after review with the policy committee. We had a public policy committee meeting held in March. We're asking for policy 610, purchases subject to bid and quotation. Policy 611, purchases budgeted, and those two are annual updates. And then policy 816, district social media, and that is a new policy.
Any questions on policy? No, affiliation agreement.
Okay. We are recommending, we're asking for your recommendation to approve the attached affiliation agreement between Franklin Regional School District and Westminster College, and this is for a student-teacher placement. So we have these affiliation agreements in place anytime we have a request, so this is a new college to be working with.
Any questions on affiliation with Westminster? Okay, fellowship agreement with St. Vincent.
Lastly, is asking for your approval for the fellowship agreement with St. Vincent College, and that is different than the affiliation agreement with Westminster, because this allows us to use the fellows as substitute teachers throughout the school year as opposed to being a student-teacher, so...
Any questions on the fellowship agreement for St. Vincent? Hearing none. Any bails have anything for the good of the order tonight? Need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You have a question?
Yes.
They were on display when they were out...
During the curriculum approval process. If you go, if you... All of our information is on, for the meetings, is online. You go to the curriculum committee meetings or go to the curriculum meeting documents, and you can see, yes, and you can see when we're going to review books. At that curriculum committee, we will decide to push forward books or not. At that point, if we push forward books, there's a 30-day review process for the public to come in. It's at the administrative office, correct? Robin? Yeah, you can come in and review those books.
You said public, not just parents.
Public. All of our stuff is online for all of our meetings. We have a lot of meetings. Dr. Pirino always runs down the list of meetings, whether it's a finance meeting, a curriculum committee meeting, a technology meeting, a policy meeting.
I think she wants to know, after that 30-day period, if she...
Well, she can ask the question if she... Of approved books? Yes. I can go on, right now, and I can see the list of all the books. I don't know if we have any pending... I don't know if we have any pending approval right now.
Yeah, nothing pending. So back when those books went through that process, they were listed in the curriculum as many minutes and in the four minutes when they were approved.
Room to the school board meeting? Yes. We're done with public comments, so...
I am going to make one comment, though. About a year ago, we were having the conversation over choice of masks. People making a choice to mask their kids or not mask their kids. With this book, we also have the choice, because this is what has got the community upset, is that there's a choice. Parents can choose to not have their child read that book and pick a different book, just like the masks. So we're trying to offer choice. We've been split down the middle on masks, we've been split down the middle on these books. We're trying to offer choice. That's all I'm going to say. That is what the teacher is teaching. So with that, motion to adjourn?
You seconded, moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those motion carries eight zero.